I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to thank each of you took time to attend tonight, and any guests were physically present need to fill out the meeting signage at the other door. It is usual or running a hybrid meeting, so we continue to allow people going to attend remotely to do so. To cut down on background noise and feedback, promote attendees should meet themselves while not speaking. Staff members and guests on the agenda will need to unmute themselves to give reports to council. Audience members may unmute themselves to speak during sessions and comments. First item on the agenda. In a couple minutes from the council meeting, February eleventh, twenty twenty five. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none at enter jam motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approve the February twenty twenty five city council minutes as submitted.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is financial report and general entries for February twenty twenty five. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none at enter jam motion.
I move the governing body of the city of Halsey approve the February twenty twenty five financial reports and journal entries as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so there any agenda adjustments?
There are not, except for that um we received notice from Sergeant Framby, so he's been called to an emergency call.
Okay.
So he is not maybe able to send to medical delegation.
Okay. So that brings the delegations, and since Sergeant Framby is not here, we will go into Sweet Home San Jose.
I haven't done this before with you.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So.
Hey, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Tulki Paskey, and I'm the controller on the San Jose. And then the last three years, I believe Josh Stanley has been attending the last two years. He was recently promoted and moved to Medford, Oregon, so he is not here tonight, but he might be joining online to say hello. So Mike Estes is his backfill, he's new to the site, but he is the site manager and can help with any questions you might have tonight. Um, he woke up about three, so he might be a little tired, but he can still help answer questions. Um, so we did prepare the PowerPoint. It's, I know I warned you, it's a lot of the same information as last year, we just updated some dates and numbers for you, so we can get started on that if you would like.
Please.
All right. Oh, next slide, or next question.
Yeah, they're all pretty quick, so. Okay, so same as last year, we're standing strong at around fifteen employees full time, so you can see we have one opening right now on a future slide, but twenty twenty four year end, fifteen employees is what we are typically sitting at. Um, on the next slide, you can see we listed our incidents, we've had nothing in the city of Halsey. Um, as Sweet Home San Jose, we did have one in twenty twenty four and nothing before that since twenty twenty two, so. Continuing to prioritize safety in the community. And then on the next slide, you can see we've listed the years of service for our employees, they really are what we have to think for safety record, right, their experience, they know what they're doing. Uh, the new site manager as well has been driving for twenty plus, twenty?
Twenty two.
Twenty two years, so a lot of experience in this area, which is great. Um. We updated the customer accounts, I think the total changed by two customers, so staying strong um with the customer account there. No big updates, and then the next slide I think is the most important one. It shows the spring cleanup right now, scheduled for June twenty first, you know, a lot of people utilize that. And then we have tentative next to the next two dates, as I believe we're gonna reach out and be in discussion about those. So if the Household Hazards Ways, which is a really popular event, is typically the first weekend in October, the the year is wrong there, but it would be right now, October twenty, or fourth, twenty twenty five. And then the next weekend, we always do the fall or the Halsey cleanup right after, so that we can not get out October eleventh. And no big updates there on scheduling. Um. So the CPI in the index we use every year is two point six, it's down quite a bit from what we've seen the last couple of years, which is great for everyone. So that is the good news, and then just open to any questions or concerns you might have.
Anybody?
What kind of options does a customer have if their can gets missed?
Um, Mike can really help with that more than I can.
If they can't get some mess from home on the same day, drivers uh still in the area, we'll send them back that day. Uh, if not, uh, we literally have our cart delivery driver the next day will come out and swap out, give them a fresh clean can, so their trash is gone by the next day.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, there.
Have you had any um changes as far as battery disposal, disposal and some of the other things, I mean, you used to do, and and last time I was up there to get rid of something, I think it was a TV, and they said you don't do that anymore, is there any been any changes in that kind of stuff?
We don't take electronics on the daily. Uh, that's what the HHW events for. Um, car batteries we do accept. Um, interstate batteries comes by once a week or or two weeks, it takes all those. But uh like cell phone batteries, lithium batteries, we do not take those. Um, it it would be on the HHW event, so once a year.
Okay, so what's a person's options, I mean, we're, we have an awful lot of toys nowadays, or double A's and triple A's and stuff like that, they typically, I'm sure, go in people's personal trash can that winds up in a landfill.
And we have seen a couple of occasions of that in the last year. Um, but we can get the information to you on this place within Albany. Um, unfortunately, we just don't have the resources to accept it on the daily ready. So we have a, have a certain kind of storage, we have to apply with DEQ on that, and we're just not uh outfitted to handle that on a daily basis right now.
Anybody else? You have a question, Anne?
I do. Um. You take wood in the garbage, right?
Right.
I was told that you do not take untreated lumber. That's wood.
That's would be incorrect, we do take like two by fours. Yes, the longs don't have a bunch of nails or bolts in them, just straight two by fours, it was cut down to about four feet, absolutely would take it.
And uh. I have an issue with it. Somebody.
Okay, so yeah, I must not be there, there's probably a personal issue, it'd be best to speak with them offline.
Uh, I have uh been told to not take lumber.
Okay, Anne, this would be best offline, okay? Let's have talk to them outside council meeting.
I'm thinking that other people might have the same issue.
Well, we can address that, and they'll let us know if there's a pervasive issue right now, we have to, we have a lot to do tonight, okay? It'd be best to speak with them offline. Okay?
You want to reach outside?
Thank you guys for your time, appreciate it.
So next item on the agenda is citizen comments from non-agenda items. This is time for interested citizens and anyone in the audience to address the council with any items of concern. Anybody online, Audrey?
Join us, but I don't know. As you can see, he has been.
Okay. Well, it's on one, it's on twice. Moving on. So next item on the agenda is reports to council, and we'll start with the city administrative report.
All right, so going strong with well updates, top of the agenda, top of the list. Um, funding efforts, uh, I I mentioned earlier in this year that I had submitted a grant EPA in the, in December of twenty twenty four. We were not selected in the first round, but we were invited to resubmit, and so they gave us a very short window, we also forgot it, I did submit that Friday. So that we will find out if we are selected for that funding, and that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it's a good chunk of money if we want it. Um, federal money comes with a lot of additional requirements, you have to do, especially through EPA, you have to do a EPA study when you get federal money, but especially if you're getting the money from the EPA, they're probably not gonna have a lot of uh they're gonna make you do it, and you know, makes sense, so, but still three hundred and fifty thousand is a lot of money, is a lot of dollars to get, and we should find out about that in May. Um, I've also submitted uh state requests to both um Senator Hankins office, as well as Representative Jamie Kate's office, and those are for, they do some legislative uh directed spending every year, and um so I put in for those. And I recently, Mayor shared with me some funding opportunities again at the federal level through Congresswoman Bynum, so we will submit for that as well. Um, I'm continuing to look for other opportunities. Um, I was looking at some, some ideas today. I, the website eludes me, but it's all related to the well, I'm looking for things that might be well suited for the upgrades and the controls that we've just really started talking about recently, because that's gonna be another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on top of just getting a little operationalized. Um, we will revisit the idea, the conversation about loans, but I really think that we should see through these things that we, these asks that we have out. So before we do that, because really phase one is scheduled to be happening all the way through May. And so we have a little time to hear if we could, you know, potentially run some grants before we start revisiting whether or not we have a serious discussion about loans. Um, loans result in raised rates for consumers. So, construction, um, we have the casing materials that go down into the well, they'll have to be custom engineered for our substrate. I think we've also talked about that to some degree in previous meetings. Um, those were sent out about a month ago, they take about that long to develop, and so those things were delivered uh late last week, and they are on site, they're doing more work, they're finishing with the phase one stuff, well development. Um, as I mentioned, that is slotted to be scheduled all the way into May, but we might not, we might see them wrapping up soon enough. Um. I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow afternoon with Andy and Billy, Matt from Civil West, uh, some electrical engineers and Tad, who are the people who do all of our programming for our well or water treatment plant controls, and they're also people that we work with for programming controls as is, which is the base, what we're trying to do to operationalize, or these three hundred and fifty dollar well control improvements that we talked about, some that we will, that we will have to do eventually. Um, and so we're gonna have that meeting to just continue to discuss these upcoming phases, flesh out our options. I'm grant writing, it's really helpful for me to have these conversations, get a sense of what the finished product will look like, what our, look like, what our options are, and how to continue to write strong brands. A big question for us is electrical costs, it just feels really expensive, and everything has gone so publicly active, but we wanna, we wanna just talk about it. Um, and so that is kind of where we're at on the well. SMAC, which is our small municipal advocacy coalition, continues to be very busy. We have dropped two grant bills, and so the one around a tiered approach to grant funding, so um, when we go in for grants, a lot of times we'll see where a city will have to come up with like a twenty percent match. And so if we're talking about a million dollar project, that's two hundred thousand dollars, and that's huge for us. A small town like us, that's like, we don't have it, we're out of the revenue immediately, so it's that piece around smaller municipalities based on population, it's like you start out with a three percent match, or five percent, and it scales up from there. We have multiple sponsors in the House of Representatives at the state level that, for those bills, and they've already been scheduled for committee hearings. Um, we also have our Lagoon certification bill, which has also been scheduled for committee hearing. Um, we have our first committee hearing on March eighteenth. The grants bill committee hearing was also scheduled for that date, however, I just found out right before the meeting that it's been rescheduled, so more to come. To be determined. Um, staff training, we held our CPR first aid event, that was uh hosted by Halsey Fire Department, and we have our fire chief Travis, and he was fantastic. Right after, yes, she was there, he was really, really great. Um, entertaining, informative, really knew his stuff, answered an array of questions, we all got to practice. We also got to practice with an AED device, and it's on our radar to purchase an AED device for City Hall and probably for the public workshop. So we'll be able to continue to make sure that we're prepared in the event of a health emergency for staff, for people coming into City Hall, and for our public works guys when they're all working and doing, you know, more hazardous, okay, they have a more physical job. Hmm. Statement of economic interest, and so SCI filings are, we're all required to do it, we're basically showing that we have not benefited from our public positions monetarily, and so for some of you, this will be your first time. Um, I spoke with somebody at the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, OGEK, today. Uh, we had some questions that you haven't received emails yet, that is because they come out on the fifteenth, so he was able to confirm that for me.
March.
That, yeah, because that's the first day that they open, I'll get the letters out, and that will help. For you two that are new, we'll connect so that you, I can make sure that you're getting the information, because you'll have to set up an account. But for anybody that just has any barriers to getting into the online system to do it, you can also just call their office, they really try to make it accessible, and we have until April fifteenth, people like that. Um, administrator leave, I am out, we took the first plan for medical leave, my projected return date is April eleventh. Um, I am working on getting staff prepared for my absence, I've already trained um our assistant city reporter on how to do some financial functions, that it's really good for our resiliency anyways, like if somebody faculty gets hit by a bus one day, right, we should have talked about that, um, there, there is somebody else in the office that can just pick up and make sure that the wheels keep turning. Um, that's important for any organization, so uh it's a good opportunity to train somebody else on some of the things that mostly I just catch, and um there won't be, you know, I won't be home for that long, and that I'm working on getting the budget as far as I can before I leave. But really, I'm gonna have to come back to it as soon as I get back, because I'm gonna wanna look at the numbers one more time. The longer that you wait into the spring for that annual fiscal budget, the better, because you have a better sense of what you're gonna spend before the end of the year, what you already spent, and what you really wanna do. Um, so that is coming, and that will lead to one of our topics in our new business, which is when it has to update our budget calendar. And also, April council meeting is canceled because of my absence, I won't really be back until next year, materials, we're gonna keep our normal council date. Um, and so we've just, instead of having a council meeting, we'll forego our meeting, and we will set aside time on April twenty second at six PM, and that will be to hear a presentation from Civil West, who worked on our wastewater facility master plan. It's um just a lot of detailed information, and there, I anticipate there will be questions, and so instead of having it as part of a regular council meeting presentation, it's gonna take too much time, it will eat up too much council meeting time, so we'll just do that in April. Uh, the book at five K, uh, that's a full swing. Registration opened the last week of January, and uh we have our library committee who's been working diligently to promote it, we've been promoting it on Facebook. Gelsor Stross has been taking flyers everywhere that she possibly can, and she also secured a donation from the Midland Valley YMCA. And we are using that as a raffle prize in hopes to incentivize some early registration. Um, registration before or by March thirty first will get you entered into a raffle to win a free three month family membership to the YMCA of the health, so it's a fantastic prize. Um, we have several uh local companies that have already just donated to our fund re-servment as sponsors, and we'll just keep pushing it forward. We encourage all members of council to consider coming, volunteering, walking the event, or just being there at the registration booth. Day of, there's lots of opportunity to engage the community. Uh, upcoming events, we have a leg drive on March twenty eighth. Um, we have a couple of things coming up that we're gonna talk about tonight, because we're not having a meeting next month. Uh, April is child awareness month, April twenty sixth is Arbor Day, May third is our Book at Five K library event. And then also this weekend, Central Institute District is doing their booster club, booster club auction night. The fifteenth, fifteenth. Thank you, so some fun things going on that are coming in. Any questions? Water first.
Right. Um, in regards to the library, Book at Five K, we're encouraging community businesses and vendors to do team building type of events, so feel free to bring your, your people, your drivers and such, participate. It'd be awesome. Look. Any questions, comments, concerns?
The day that you stand out, right?
That is on May third.
At ten AM. Let's see, we have.
Not here.
We have, we have.
Yeah, right there. This is for Apple.
It's just, so have the information on it, the QR code at the top is the signup link. Okay, thank you. And there is an option for actual teams this year, so.
Okay.
We probably have some of the other flyers too.
Can you speak at some?
Yeah, we'll make sure you have some.
Yeah.
So the next is public works. It's any online, no?
No, public works and library reports are now.
As you read, I just wanna make sure.
Oh, okay. I think I told you you didn't have to tell.
I saw, I saw the name, but wait a minute, are we not doing that now?
No.
So, okay. Read it from well. And next is council report, um, in my mayor's report. It's actually been kind of busy so far. City administrator, I had the, the county sheriff's quarterly meeting, and you'll see on just spaces, the FBI fraud alert. There's been a major uptick in fraud attempts. And so they had the FBI's documentation, they're putting out, they're gonna tweak it to their own, and we're gonna be doing some stuff of ours as well. Um, seemed like the elderly being focused on more. So if you know people in your area, and there's elderly, you know, concerned about, appropriate to share that with them. Um, had a meeting with the Oregon Emergency Management uh group to state about the ongoing cascade of prep, and how small communities are being uh addressed, specifically communities that are surrounded by bridges like us. Uh, at some point, probably in the next, I'm guessing, six months, maybe reaching out to us and to the volunteer front department to find out where there would be a suitable place to land the health. And so I'm sure that National Guard will be involved in that, when that's gonna be, I don't know, because they don't know. And then on the eighth, I had a meeting, actually rather interesting, a short notice, an invitation to a meeting with uh Congresswoman Bynum in Oregon City, and myself and four other mayors met with her. Uh, she's trying to get a handle on what communities need, she's very much a Oregon-centric individual. Doesn't get into the whole left, right politics, which is refreshing. And is wanting to know what, as community, what we need, what are our major concerns, and pretty much as a whole um, the housing issue that we have, and the I'm so calling it edith, it's come down from the state that's unfunded, how we're gonna address that, that's gonna hurt small communities. She still has a lot of hope in the state house, so she's gonna be lead on people for that. Um, she's, has said that if we wanna ever do a, a town hall, let her know, she'll be here. So, that's something for, uh, coming up on the sixteenth, I think it is, at Lindbergh Community College, she's doing a town hall in Albany. And Senator Wyden's gonna be there as well. And um, there is a link that I can get to you, that you can go on there and find all the agenda, so if that's what you're interested, let me, I'll get that to you. So. And that's pretty much it. Me.
Um, before I move on, I forgot to mention that Stacy attended the event, so do you mind talking a little bit about?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, um, me and Caitlin had a table at the grade school for the lit night, um, just to promote the library in general. Kind of the new things that have been added in the last year, um, and the five bands and summer reading. We did get, at least, I think we got two cards signed up that day um at the table, and then a few people who were wanting information more on summer reading as it comes up, and some interest on the five K. Um, but Caitlin got to meet some of the kids that come into the library pretty consistently, um, and got to meet families and some different aspects of the school, and kind of get to talk to some of the kids to see what they're into, and kind of what they're excited about for summer reading, because this is kind of a different summer reading theme that we've had the last couple of years, that's like a game STEM-based theme. Um, so hearing some of the kids talk about their interests will kind of help, I think, with some of the programming, and then just get the word out for you know, new library cards, what we have as far as kids going into summer reading, um, and the events coming up like Arbor Day and that kind of stuff. And then I've been talking to a few of the teachers at the grade school about trying to partner up at the library and doing stuff between the libraries specifically and the classes. Um, so one of the kindergarten teachers, and then one of the first and second grade teachers is gonna start contacting and trying to either do tours or talks or um more involvement with it. Um, I'm helping Caitlin with a few ideas on just how to get the grade school more involved, either through like art or different projects or stuff that brings the kids, you know, actually into the library, or, you know, different aspects that get them more excited and more involved, and hopefully get some classes walking down and doing field trips and stuff, and more cards in the community, since we have a lot more you know, to offer that we did a few years ago, and some of the people were coming during COVID.
Excellent.
I was there very briefly, and I feel like the parents were showing up at the table because there was a lot of receipts from the seed nursery.
Flowers went very quickly, yes.
There was, there was definitely some interest, there were some things that could be taken, so. Intensifying.
People like free stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were pretty impressed with the, we handed out the Master Gardeners line for urban health and um a lot of talk about summer reading and kind of the AMP of, because a lot of the kids who go to Central Illinois in Brownsville, so they do, like the Brownsville summer reading program, didn't realize that our library had it. Um, so some are excited about being able to do potentially two of them, because Brownsville's is during the week, and ours is on the weekend, so it gives their kids something else to do during the week if they can kind of double up on summer reading programs.
Excellent, excellent, thank you for doing that. Questions, comments? Moving on. Old business. The second reading of the ordinance two zero two five dash four eight, the ordinance amending Halsey Municipal Code to update provisions related camping and RV residency on private property. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, that's the questions about the ordinance as it was amended, right? That you're asking.
Yes, yes.
I have some updates from conversations with Ross as well that I can elaborate on. Um, so we sent the ordinance out to our attorney, and they provided some, just were some formatting amendments, getting some things around. Um, a few sort of comments and questions in the margins, and so we've incorporated um some of those things that did small changes to the language that he documented, that they kept the substance of the ordinance, and then also really the, the only thing that's left sort of up in the air that I think we need to discuss further, and we, nothing can decide that this is good, right, and it's only really working. But some of the things we had questions on, I wanted to bring the council, were things around this piece that we have, this RV residency. this piece that we have, this RV residency permit. And then previously it was an agreement, and so the difference, he pointed out, would be a permit, it says you know, if it's a permit, how do we revoke a permit? An agreement can be revoked in the same way, so I know it's, you know, interesting that he pointed that out as such, but um, really just sort of saying like, is there a field process? And currently in our enforcement, there's not really a field process. And so that's something that we can consider fleshing out a little bit more. Um, and then the other piece was that we have a component in there that says that um, the adminis- that a extension can be requested. I'm trying to find where it's at, but it's in extenuating circumstances. And that was language that I saw as an example in other instances from other cities. Was to call it extenuating circumstances, but one of the things that was a comment from him was, what's extenuating? So do we need to better define that extenuating piece within the ordinance to say proof of imminent medical issue? Because I think that council just needs to make a decision of what they consider extenuating. Um, and at least attempt to try to define it, because when you talk about extenuating, there's an assumption that there's room for some interpretation, like, oh, well, they have somebody who can come pull it out of there, but not until Tuesday, and it's currently Saturday. And the time is up. So that can be considered extenuating, and they've got a plan. But that's not a medical emergency. So like, these are the things that we could potentially foresee coming up. When we're trying to navigate, will we make exceptions to any sort of like, you know, time's up situation? But overall, not a ton of notes on the language that we've developed so far.
So I have a question on, on page fifty-two about the middle page, but RV residency progress. It says within ten days, is that ten calendar days or ten business days? Does that need to be?
And that's one of the things that he added, was that he was like, if it was announced, why does it need to be to cover ourselves legally, that there needs to be a process? So I think that's the council. We can say ten days, or we can say ten business days.
I would think it'd be fair to the citizen that it'd be ten business days.
I think so.
Otherwise, it's going to say you're going to do this two days, you obviously can't ask for permission on Saturday and Sunday when there's no one here.
Or holidays or anything like that.
Yeah, I think business days would be.
Everybody in agreement for business days? Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
And what would you consider to be an extenuating circumstance?
I understand that that's Ross's, and, and I'm not, I, I think that's Ross's recommendation. I go back and forth about whether or not we define it completely. Uh, we could do language where we say, um, proof of medical hardship. Something like proof of, you know, that they're already on the list and they're going to be moving into a place in thirty days.
Right.
Like some of these things where they're like, I have somewhere to go in thirty days, can I be given this extension?
Right.
Um, I think that that's the thing that needs to be better fleshed out, and then maybe leaving a little language. Other, like, uh, other situations must go for counsel. Like, I, you know, it's like, you've already said that ten days or less.
Right.
I can decide in-house, and if anything, that has to go to council.
I think it'd be my view is, if it's handled by city staff, unless there's a, a major question. City staff can handle it. The one question or concern I have is on if we specifically say a medical emergency. Do we run afoul of HIPAA? If we demand proof?
True.
Now, unless it's something under the care of a physician for medical emergency from a doctor, letters blanket like that. We need to make sure we're not going to fall foul of HIPAA.
If we define that as such.
Right.
Um, people that file for hardship housing permits to put like a, you know, that they're manufactured on like an acre piece or something.
Right.
Those counties generally have a requirement that you prove hardship.
Right.
To some degree, so there's got to be a way.
Right.
We can also discuss removing the language for extenuating circumstances, and then just say that requests for extensions have to be filed. And if it's ten days or less.
Right.
This, and if it's
Ten days, one, it goes to council.
To council. Um, so we don't have to define what extenuating means, but we might still run into, it's like, well, what situations would you approve it for?
Right. That.
I can see removing it would be fine, keeping it out, because what's extenuating to one person may not be to another.
Right.
You can say medical, but what if there's? Yeah.
Well, I think if, if we, if we take it out, it's going to be per individual situation. That said, we've pretty much agreed to, we don't expect to have a big issue in the future on us.
I would say that if you take it down.
I'm wrong.
Yeah, if it's something that becomes an issue, we can definitely revisit it.
Less than ten days, let city staff address it. If it's over ten days, bring it to council.
Well, and you know, always, yeah, if you have any questions, you can always get ahold of us too, whereas to run it past us. I vote for just taking extenuating circumstances out.
Well, consensus on that?
Yep, yep. Um, I have a question about how this is enforced. It looks like an awful lot of this falls to the administrator. And just, I guess, I hope I'm not borrowing trouble, but what if it's a situation where uh, administrator's on vacation and/or medically can't show up for work?
I think.
All to make that decision.
I think if uh, we add Burridge of or designate me. So.
Because, yeah, if she's not here, it would fall back to your assistant or the next one in line.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking legally, wouldn't it be helpful to ask that in writing?
Yeah.
That, that whoever she passes it to legally has that
Correct.
Authority to take that on.
True. Good thought.
No, that's a good point. So like, would, would there be something in here that it says must be filed with administrator, must be? I think that we can also
It says it actually.
Things where it says it's be filed with the city administrator, it can say it's with the city. But when we're talking about making an exception, it requires some administrative discretion, but I'm not just saying.
It says it on the first page here, it says city administrator means the Halsey City Administrator or the city administrators designate.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Great.
On the first, on the definition of the definitions. Sure. I don't know. I don't know how I saw.
I think there's anything else in here, I wanted to make sure of the touchstone.
Good to know we didn't have too much to say though.
No, a lot of big ones, there was a couple things that were out of like, you know, need to do fill in a certain amount of time or or what have you, but, uh, mostly it was, it was kind of adding a little bit of language that maybe it's more aligned with legal language.
Legal, legalism.
He did do some, he moved stuff into different parts of the paragraph.
Any other questions, comments? The way of four options. Improve as recommended, move to resolution. Request amendments, provide for the direction of staff or deny the request. So, and that's consensus.
I'd say approved.
I say approved at this point. We've all had our input and Ross has looked through it, as long as you're okay as a city administrator taking on some of this if it comes to it. You know, the permit and following through with stuff.
Yeah, and we have permits for all kinds of stuff.
Well, yeah. I just meant another thing for you guys to add to your.
Yeah, well, in terms of enforcement piece, I think that it's important to always remember that when it comes to trying to do enforcement, it can be said for whatever reason that is that we, you know, we have lots of things where it's like, somebody's got, you're like, you're right. You know, and so we just do our best, we make contact with people. You know, we reach out with someone that's like very clear that there's something going on, you know, we have pictures, we have things that we can do. But everything has the potential for somebody to be like, I don't do that, or, or whatever the case may be. And so we just handle those things as they come.
So we're all in consensus for approval or, or no?
And then later on in the agenda, we'll actually put on my.
I'm not hearing any no, some, it sounds like there's a consensus.
Well, let me s- say this, um, I think I've been pretty clear, I think this is way too long, six months and then ninety days extension. Other than that, I want you to get rested, but that doesn't mean you can't vote on it.
Well, we're moving on later, so. A bit tight. Uh, it's new business.
Thank you, guys.
Brett, adopt the amended budget calendar. Um, so we're asked to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six budget calendar. Uh, it's not required by law, it's by recommended, it's best practice. Those budget calendar fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty sixteen, post for your reviewing.
Um, this is a different amended budget calendar, it's got a few date changes. Um, the date change for when we'll publish our first notice um, has shifted just a little bit, but for the things that are maybe more relevant to the rest of you, it is, um, we're doing the budget committee training and orientation on April twenty ninth. Um, it, it's a small group, because it will be just new budget committee members and new counselors who are also budget committee members. So if we find that that date does not work for many, that can be amended as well between us. But for the ones that are public meetings, public hearings, we've shifted the first budget committee out by a week to the twelfth, to the sixth of May. Um, we've still held a second budget committee meeting that's only as needed, which shifted out to later in the month. And then the remaining dates are the same.
This is six thirty. Questions, comments?
Maybe, maybe not.
Nope. I will entertain a motion.
Governing body of City of Halsey, oh, back up. Uh, approved the twenty twenty five, twenty six budget calendar as submitted.
All in favor? Motion carries. Next item of new business is appoint the budget committee member. We're asked to appoint a member to the budget committee. Uh, we have applicant interested in joining the city budget committee. Ashley Lundby, she's expressed interest in the budget committee, there's an application attached, and we currently have two vacancies. Questions, comments, concerns?
Yes, I have a comment. I think you should take this application, have it framed and put it on the window, this is how.
Yeah.
I mean, the penmanship was legible and the sentences were coherent and.
Yep.
Yeah.
We love to see it.
Yes.
We love the, the applications.
Well, with that, then I have the entertaining motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey appoint Ashley Lundby to the budget committee.
Second.
All in favor? And moving on to the best. Yeah, we are. Resolutions and ordinances, or this is resolutions as you choose to call it. Uh, twenty twenty five, seven, four, two, resolution to appropriate funds received from the Oregon State Connectivity Grant. Do you want to address editor?
So this is not new money. We got a connectivity grant about tablets with it.
Right.
I am working on budget, and so we received the money into next fiscal year when we had planned to get it in the last fiscal year, it got, it's, it's hard to read, I'll forgive me, to do practice. So this is a.
Questions, comments? I entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash seven, four, two, a resolution of the city of Halsey to receive and appropriate a connectivity grant from the State Library of Oregon.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next one's resolution two zero, two, five, dash, seven, four, three, a resolution for pretty of Halsey proclaiming April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, the Arbor Day in the city of Halsey. Then we have to move for a tree city designation. Questions, comments, concerns? And we know that entertain a motion.
I move the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash seven, forty three. Resolution of the city of Halsey proclaiming April twenty five, twenty twenty five as Arbor Day in the city of Halsey.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Motion carries. And next item is a resolution two zero, two, five, dash, seven, seven, four. Resolution for the city of Halsey proclaiming April twenty twenty five as child abuse prevention awareness month. Very soft and predatory. Any questions, comments, concerns? I would entertain a motion, please.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash seven, four, four. A resolution of the city of Halsey proclaiming April twenty twenty five as child abuse prevention and awareness month. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Carries. And next is resolution two zero, two, five, dash, seven, four, five, resolution for the city of Halsey. Uh, proclaiming and honoring Dr. Candace Pelt for her service to the Central Land School District and the city of Halsey. Uh, as you may or may not be aware, um, superintendent Pelt is no longer with the school district. But she did a ton to help the school district. And did a ton helping myself and city administrator repair the relationship between the city of Halsey and the Central Land School District, and we need to make sure that she is recognized for that.
Yes.
She retired or?
Uh, she, yeah. I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash seven, four, five for the city of Halsey proclaiming in honoring of Dr. Candace Pelt for her service to the Central Land School District and the city of Halsey.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Last but not least.
I'm so surprised how fast we're getting to it.
Ordinance two zero, two, five, dash, four, four, eight, an ordinance amending Halsey Municipal Code to update provisions. Related to camping RV residency of a private property. We already discussed this.
Can we approve it tonight with, or do we say with the amendments?
Correct.
It should be approved with the amendment.
With the amendments that we, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering if, yeah, I would like to see it finished, but.
Finished, yeah.
So council has the option to do that. I might only know, which I have no preference to be clear. For me, this is not a rush, but council might feel differently. Uh, we would not be able to review it with final amendments and vote on it until May because we're not doing an April council meeting.
Right.
So it's up to you guys.
If you want to see the change of amendments that you've suggested. And you want to see that in writing after it might be best if you want to kick it out until May. So. That'd be falling under providing further directions to staff essentially. Is that something you guys want to do?
I mean, I trust that we're going to get it right, but I also kind of think. Agree that it'd be nice to make sure that it's all finalized and we've got like the correct wording and everything. So.
Just to, yeah, to get the, the lawyer to look at the last. I don't know if that would be smarter or not smarter.
I agree.
Yes, I don't think we'll actually have a problem with it.
No.
Okay. So then the option you would choose would be providing further directions to staff. So I would entertain a motion. To provide further directions to staff.
Yeah. Does it all need to be read or just approved?
We just approve for providing further directions.
Sure, okay.
We don't have to perform a.
Don't have to read the whole motion. Perfect.
And that is they say.
You don't. Okay, sorry. In fact, because this is a motion, we actually have to have somebody. We have to do it.
I move that the governing body of city of Halsey provide further direction to the staff. Regarding ordinance twenty twenty five dash four, four, eight, an ordinance amending Halsey Municipal Code, Chapter five, minute, six. To update provisions related to camping and RV residency on private property. Second.
Second.
That worded correctly. Good enough, I guess.
It was perfect.
Now would be done.